Good evening and welcome to the July 14, 2025, meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Andrew Eric, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body, that's the city council, we are a policy implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews city-initiated land use projects, such as general plan updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. When applicable, the planning commission reviews below-market rate or BMR housing agreements associated with these applications. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as the recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with those projects. If applicable, the planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with these projects. Staff in our city's planning division are responsible for implementation of the general plan, zoning ordinances, and related policies. This responsibility includes but is not limited to processing applications in a timely manner and proposing any zoning changes to our zoning code that make it more efficient and less Byzantine. Staff is also responsible for the agenda of regular planning commission meetings and for prioritizing what and when items and development applications come before the planning commission. Planning commissioners do not have any ability to place items on the agenda for these meetings. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or interested member of the public, and there will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as for general public comment. With that, I will call the roll. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Present.
Commissioner Schindler.
Here.
Commissioner Sillin.
Here.
I am Chair Eric, and I am present, so we have four commissioners in chambers, which is a quorum. Three commissioners are absent this evening. The next item on our agenda is reports and announcements. Mr. Rogers, are there any staff reports or announcements this evening?
Yes, just a couple. Last Monday, July 7, the city released the final EIR for the Parkline master plan. That is scheduled for a planning commission review on July 28. It will be the only item on that meeting's agenda. For the city council, they are currently on their summer hiatus, they take a little bit of a longer break during the summer. The next city council meeting will be August 12. That concludes our staff reports and announcements.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Do any commissioners have any questions about those announcements? Or any reports or announcements of their own? Okay, seeing none, let's move to item D, the public comment portion of our agenda. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name, district, or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will have a chance to speak when we get to that item in the agenda. So, to learn how to participate, I am going to turn to our clerk this evening, Mr. Turner, to explain how you can participate, and then to begin our public comment period.
Thank you, Chair Eric. If you would like to give public comment at tonight's meeting and you are participating via Zoom, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in via phone, please click the star nine, and that will alert staff that you have a public comment. If you are in chambers today and would like to give public comment, please fill out a comment card at the back of the room and hand it to me. We'll give it a few seconds here to see if any hands are raised for general public comment. And with that, we do not have any public commenters.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I will now close the public comment portion of our agenda. The next item is our consent calendar. Tonight, there is one item on the consent calendar, approval of the minutes from the June 23, 2025, planning commission meeting. I am actually going to pull this item from the consent calendar, so I'm just gonna do that now, since there's only one item. I already read the item. Does staff have any update on this item?
No, from staff's perspective, there are no changes or updates to the minutes from the June 23 meeting.
Thank you very much. Do any planning commissioners have any clarifying questions? Okay, I will now call for public comment on this item. Mr. Turner, can you please provide instructions for the public comment period and open public comment?
Once again, if you would like to give public comment on the consent calendar items, please click star nine on the bottom of your Zoom screen, or, sorry, raise hand at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or star nine if you are calling in to tonight's meeting. Give it a couple seconds here. Still no public commenters for the consent calendar.
Thank you very much. Given that, I will move us back to the dais for commission discussion, and since I pulled the item, I'll just go ahead and bring up my discussion item, after which other commissioners are, of course, welcome to as well. My question is for staff. At the June 23, 2025, meeting during item G informational items, there was a discussion and some ambiguity about whether or not the Brown Act allowed us to discuss future items, not to take action on future items, but to discuss any future items on the agenda. I do not see that discussion reflected in the minutes. That meeting was three weeks ago. One day after that meeting, Vice Chair Silverstein sent an email to staff asking if we could amend the language of item G to make it more clear that such discussion would be allowed in order to better facilitate collaboration between staff and the planning commission. To my knowledge, staff has not responded in either direction on that request, and so my question for staff, for Mr. Rogers, I guess, is does staff have any update on the status of that request?
I certainly apologize as I fill in a bit for this meeting. I do not have the background of having attended the meeting, or the preparation of the minutes, or independent follow-ups. I did understand through discussion with my colleague, there was some discussion about what commissioners could discuss within this, but in terms of any details, I apologize, I'm not the best source for that. If there's a desire to at least mention that there was a discussion and what the subject was, the commission could make that part of your motion, and staff would review that for accuracy and compliance when finalizing the minutes, but you might be asking for something different, so I apologize if that's non-responsive.
Thank you. I appreciate that you were not at that meeting. In that case, I'll be voting no on approval of these minutes, but I would be happy to entertain a motion from other commissioners if they would like to make it.
Can we punt on this until our next meeting, when our regular, to give staff a little more time, and potentially to have our regular staff attendee help us with that?
I think we can continue the motion if we want.
Yes, that would be a valid motion if that's the desire of the majority of the commission.
In that case, I would move that we continue this item until the next meeting.
I'm happy to second that.
Quick question, do we know that our regular liaison will be at the next meeting?
Yes, Karina is the project planner for the Parkline project, so she'll definitely be here, and then I believe Kyle Prado will have some role, at least in the lead-up to the meeting, too. So, yeah, Karina is, again, the PC of the A'SHON, and she will be here on the 28th.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we have a motion and a second, so not seeing any further discussion, I will call the vote on the motion to continue item E1, approval of minutes from the June 2023, 2025, planning commission meeting. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillin.
Yes.
I am Chair Eric, I also vote yes, so that motion passes with four commissioners in favor and three absent. Okay, we will now move on to item F1, the first public hearing item for a use permit at 1221 Windermere Avenue. The agenda indicates that this item is continued to August 11, and staff should correct me if this is incorrect, but I believe we need a commission motion to continue that item.
Yes, although first, you should open public comment, because somebody who received the card notifying them of the meeting might not be aware that it continues, it's being continued, and this might be their only opportunity to comment, so that should precede any motion to continue.
Got it, okay. In that case, my apologies, we'll do this in order. Does staff have any updates to provide on item F1?
No, no updates to this item.
Okay. Do planning commissioners have any clarifying questions on this item? Commissioner Beruzzi.
Somewhere I read, or I think in staff announcements, they said that the 7/28 meeting will only be Parkline. Are we continuing this to August? I just missed it.
Yeah, sorry, it's indicated that this item will be continued to August 11.
You're right, okay, thank you, great.
No problem. Okay, seeing no other questions, I will turn to Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner, if you could please open public comment on this item and provide instructions on providing public comment.
Yes, thank you. If you would like to give public comment on item F1, please click the raise hand button on your screen. If you are participating by Zoom, please click star nine on your phone if calling into the meeting, and if you would like to give public comment in person, please fill out a comment card and hand it to me. We'll give it a few moments here. At the moment, we do not have any public commenters.
Thank you very much, Mr. Turner. In that case, I will close public comment on this item, and would be happy to entertain a motion to continue this item to August 11.
I move to continue item F1 till August 11.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, and without being too presumptuous, presumptuous, I will go ahead and call the vote. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillin.
Yes.
I am also a yes, that is four yes votes. We will talk about that item more in a few weeks. Okay, I will now move us to item F2. This agenda item is regarding a use permit at 303 Concord Drive. At this public hearing, the commission may, excuse me, consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to construct first-floor additions and conduct interior modifications to an existing non-conforming single-story residence at 303 Concord Drive in the R1U Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. The proposed work would exceed 75% of the replacement value of the existing structure, which requires a use permit. Determine this action is categorically exempt under CEQA Guideline Section 15303 Class 3 exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. The proposal includes the addition of an attached accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, and a junior accessory dwelling unit, or JADU, which are permitted uses and not subject to discretionary review. Mr. Chan, as the staff owner of this project, are there any updates from staff?
Thank you, Chair. There are no updates from the staff report. Staff would like to note that the applicant and architect, John Ryder, is available this evening for questions, as well as the homeowner, Ali Modaris.
Great, thank you. Does Mr. Ryder have a prepared presentation, or just available for comments?
Mr. Ryder is available for questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. In that case, I will ask commissioners if there are any clarifying questions on this item F2. Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you. I think the staff report does a great job laying out some of the specific requirements of ADUs and JADUs, but as this commission has not seen nearly as many JADUs as we have seen ADUs, I was asking, going to ask that staff could please enumerate some of the key differences and the requirements between ADUs and JADUs.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. I'm gonna pull up our city's accessory dwelling units webpage, which has a quick summary. JADUs are most differentiated in their unit sizes. There's a minimum unit size of 150 square feet and a maximum unit size of 500 square feet. Also, one of the primary differences is that the sanitation facilities, or the bathroom, restroom facilities, those could be shared with the primary dwelling unit if desired. There are also no replacement parking requirements for JADUs, so those are some of the high-level differences.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that clarifying question, it's also my understanding that JADUs, basically, you can't build new square footage, JADUs are only conversions of existing square footage in a home. Is that basically right?
I think generally, the idea is correct, but if someone wanted to build like a brand-new home and also include a JADU, that is also possible.
Does a JADU further increase, like an ADU, we know very well increases the allowed square footage of a home by 800 square feet, does the JADU increase the allowed square footage of a home by an additional 500 square feet?
No, the JADU does not have the same type of 800 square foot exceedance for floor area limit or building coverage, similar to accessory or attached ADUs, as well as detached ADUs that this commission sees frequently.
Thank you very much, that is helpful. Are there any other clarifying questions from commissioners?
Just building on the clarification that Mr. Chan made, I think I had a question about when an existing garage is converted, either to an ADU or a JADU, just, I was seeking confirmation that in either of those cases, the replacement parking is not required, and I just wanted to verbalize the request and give Mr. Chan an opportunity to clarify for public the answer to the question.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler, for that earlier question. You're correct, so the conversion of the garage to either JADU or standard ADU, for lack of better words, that would not require a replacement parking for the primary dwelling unit, and this is in line with the California government code and their efforts to provide additional housing opportunity through ADU programs.
Thank you very much. Yes, Commissioner Sillin.
Thank you. The staff report mentions that outside of the ADU and JADU, there's an additional 621 square feet being added to the main home. I was wondering on page 27, where it's doing like the, page 27 of the agenda packet, where it shows the calculations for the existing development versus the proposed development and the development value, it shows for the first-floor addition, 478 square feet, rather than 621. I was just wondering why those numbers are different.
Thank you, Commissioner Sillin, for that question. So, the sheet that we are referencing on page 27 of the agenda packet, that is actually a different type of calculation. It looks very similar to the floor area limit diagrams, but what we see on sheet A1 is the non-conforming structure calculation, and those talk about like rooms that are being touched, square footages that are added, so it's a bit more complex than just the standard floor area limit additions, where you reference that number of, I think it was about, an addition of 621 square feet. That was just a straight mathematical analysis of the difference between the current square footage and then the proposed square footage, and seeking to carve out the different areas between the accessory dwelling unit and then the JADU, to give a sense of how much the primary space is increasing in relation to where it is today.
Thank you. I didn't totally follow what you said, so I just maybe wanted to repeat my understanding. So, yeah, there's this new work value calculation that I'm seeing on page 27. My understanding is this calculation is being done to see if it triggers the requirement for a hearing, whether the replacement value is 75% or 50%, or whatever the trigger is. That's my understanding, that could be wrong, I'm just saying what I think it is. And so, yeah, maybe you could just clarify what the purpose of this calculation is and why for the additional square feet, it would show something different from the actual square footage, the 621, why this shows 478?
Thank you, Commissioner Sillin. So, it could potentially show a different number, because it's not addition, it's not adding square footage, it could be spaces that are remodeled, also not being able to look at like all the floor area diagrams intently right now, but just Principal Planner Rogers also noted to me that for the floor area limit, there are portions of this residence that are greater in 17 feet in height, so those areas are also double-counted, so that could also result in that increase in the floor area that we're seeing that higher number.
Got it, okay, thanks. And a similar question I had is from the data sheet, so I don't have the page number in front of me, but the one at the very end of the agenda item in the PDF, the data table, attachment C, page 72. So, it shows that the garage square footage is 390 square feet, and my understanding was that the JADU is just converting the garage to a livable space, however, for the proposed project is showing 490 square feet for the JADU, which is an additional 100 square feet, versus the garage, so I'm just wondering where that comes from.
Right, so the primary space is, as you mentioned, is being converted from the garage to the JADU. There's also additional, I think, connection areas with the primary residence, as well as there's a bicycle storage area towards the front along Concord that is also part of the JADU, so that's where you get that additional square footage.
Thank you for the clarification, and so, in my mind, a JADU, I was under the impression that JADU was supposed to be just a straight conversion of existing space, but it has allowed for JADU to add additional square footage as part of the conversion for whatever the state definition of a JADU is?
Right, it could be carved out of existing space that is there today, or it could also be carved out of existing space that would be there in the future, so it is allowed.
Got it, okay, thank you. I don't have any more clarifying questions right now.
Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you. I believe this is appropriate as a clarifying question, but I do have a clarification question for the applicant. The project description letter says, "Informal meetings and discussions have been held to address any concerns and gather feedback. The proposal has received positive responses from the neighbors thus far." I was looking for more specifics about what informal meetings and discussions constituted, and I was specifically interested in whether or not the owners of 307 Concord or 308 Trenton had been specifically engaged, as the most immediate properties. Please.
Thank you for the question. This is Ali, the owner of the 303 Concord property. So, the nature of the meetings entailed showing the plan that we have in place in terms of the elevations and the way the house would look like in the future, and making sure that there's nothing concerning. We have talked to all the immediate neighbors, and also have tried to go a little bit farther in terms of the next-to-immediate, the next-to-next, to that to the extent possible, and have tried to make sure that there has been no concern from the neighbors in those situations.
Thank you for that additional detail, it's just really helpful to sort of hear the specifics. Thank you, that addresses my question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Modaris. I see no other clarifying questions from commissioners, in which case, I'm going to move us to public comment. Mr. Turner, could you please provide instructions regarding public comment and start the comment period?
Yes, if you would like to give public comment on item F2, and you are participating via Zoom, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you are calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your phone, or if you are in person, please fill out a comment card and hand it to me. We'll give it a few moments here. I do see one hand at the moment, so I will unmute you, and you will have three minutes to speak, and in the meantime, if we have any other public commenters, please click Okay, so I have Lola, you should be able to unmute yourself, you'll have three minutes Lola, I see that you're unmuted, but we cannot hear you.
With apologies to the public commenter, we still cannot hear.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now, please go ahead. Yes, we can hear you now. Please go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so I'm Lola Walker, and I live adjacent to this property. I do not believe that I was informed formally or informally. I went to the city chambers to see the plans, and I could only see them on the screen, and it wasn't adequate in my view. I am very concerned about the fact that there's going to be a garage conversion. And also, it looks like it's, at one point, it's about four feet or so from my fence line, from the fence line. So I don't feel comfortable, actually, with how this is proceeded. So I don't know what I can do at this point. I would like to have some more formal understanding of what I'm going to be exposed, how long the construction's going to happen. And, you know, it's just, I've lived here for 34 years, and this is a big change for me. Okay. Will someone respond?
Thank you for your comment. With apologies, I don't believe we are permitted to respond directly to the comment, but please continue to listen in for a commission discussion after public comment ends.
Okay.
This is the last call for public comment. So if you'd like to give comment on this item, please click the raise hand button. I have no additional commenters at this time.
Okay. Then I will close the public comment period and move us into commission discussion, and ultimately, a motion regarding the use permit. Would any commissioners like to begin the discussion? I will go ahead then. And can I just ask staff, in light of the public comment, to briefly summarize what the noticing requirements are for projects such as this? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Eric. I was looking for the page in our staff report to make sure I get the language accurate. So public notification was achieved with the posting of the agenda, with the agenda items being listed at least 72 hours prior to the meeting. Public notification also consisted of publishing a notice in the local newspaper, as well as notification of owners and occupants within a 300-foot radius of the property.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Sillen.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up on that for staff, to the chair, if I may. Regarding the property owners within 300 feet of the property, how is that notice done? Just to be clear on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Sillen. That information is provided to us by the County Assessor's Office.
Sorry, I meant to ask, how is the notice delivered to the property owners within that radius?
It's in a physical postcard.
Got it. And is it just one time, or is it multiple?
So actually, this would have been the second notice that was mailed out. We do a first, we call it a seven-day notice or an application received notice. So generally, within about a week or so of an application received, we send out a courtesy notice to notify neighbors of the application that has been received. And throughout the project processing, individuals are welcome to view the project plans and all materials at City Hall.
Thank you. I had a separate question about parking. I understand that replacement parking cannot be required. And my understanding is that the only parking that this property will have is the driveway. Is that correct, before I continue?
That is correct.
Okay. And if the applicant later on decided that he or she did want a garage, or he presumably, is that possible to add on later?
I don't believe it, it would be possible, just for the mere fact that the floor area limit has already been exceeded now with this proposal. So there would be no additional floor area allowed.
Okay, thanks. And does that also apply to carports, since I believe we consider carports to be part of the calculation, one of these calculations, if I'm not mistaken?
You're correct. Carports are included within the floor area limit calculations. So essentially, there is no additional floor area allowed.
Okay. Thank you. I think I don't have any more questions. I just wanted to comment that, for me personally, this item was a little bit hard to parse, just in preparation for today's meeting. Specifically, yeah, there was just, in my mind, some confusion about what is being added and where, in terms of the summary and the actual plans. I think it would have been helpful, like on page 27 and 28, there's these color-coded plans, and then they have little, it looks like spreadsheet tables in the diagrams. But at least the PDF that I have, that I downloaded from the city website, the PDF, the, sorry, Excel tables are kind of blurry and hard to read. I think that would have made it easier for me to understand which space is being added for the ADU versus the JADU versus the addition, and then which areas are being remodeled. So that's just, just feedback. It would, something I particularly pay attention to is just trying to separate all these different spaces, since my understanding is that per state law, we have a lot less discretion over the ADU and JADU. So I kind of want to just be able to mentally set those aside. And, yeah, I think in the introduction from this staff report, it was just a little unclear, for me, how much total square footage is being added, because I know that for some of the calculations, we don't include the ADU and JADU, but some we do. And so, I don't know, for me, I would just like to kind of have it spelled out more clearly. So that's just some feedback. But regarding this project, I think, yeah, given that, again, my understanding is, you know, per state law, the JADU and the ADU are kind of out of purview. I think I just look at this as a remodel and some additional square feet. The structure is not expanding into setbacks against the rules. It's keeping some non-conforming setbacks, which happens commonly. And so, I don't, pending other discussion from other commissioners, I don't see any red flags with this project, and I would support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Sillen. I just want to confirm, maybe I understood this wrong. Garages count against the floor area limit. Is that correct?
Garages and carports count towards floor area limit.
Thank you. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yeah, I wanted to check in with the applicant about their recollection of the conversations with the neighbors, in light of what the public commenter said. I would think that if there were any conversation you want to have, it would be with the resident of 308 Trenton Way, since that's the place where you're going from like a 26-foot setback to a four-foot setback. And so I'm wondering if you can share with us your recollection of that communication, which you had, I'm sure there was some, right?
I wish there was a way to connect faces to this. I guess the person on the call would have remembered, myself and my wife, we came to the door. We actually talked about it in detail. If it reminds anything, their cat was in their backyard, so we had to find them and give it back to them. And we were very clear that because this project involves an ADU, the setbacks are going to be a little bit closer to this place. It appears that there's a disconnect. But this lady, we were one of the first people I actually talked to. I'm not sure if there's any other way you can help to establish that, but at least from our perspective, this communication was done.
Thank you, Mr. Madaris.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you. I was just, to staff, seeing as there were some points of potential unclear sort of numeric, like, amounts of setback, I think I heard that in the public comment. I was just hoping that you could enumerate, I believe, along the rear and the north side, just how much space there will be, how much, what the setbacks will be, and how that compares to the existing structure. I think it's just worth verbalizing that for, for the points of public clarity.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. And I would just note that I did meet with Ms. Walker at the counter to review these project plans last week, and did point out the setbacks that I will detail to you at this moment. So pulling from the data table provided in our packet, the zoning ordinance requirement, or the minimum for the ADU setback is four feet. To the rear, the proposed ADU will meet that four-foot setback. Additionally, to the side right, north setback, the minimum is also four feet, and the ADU will meet that as well.
Thank you for clarifying, and also for the additional information about the meeting. I appreciate that. I have no further questions. And because this project meets all of our requirements as a city, and that we have consistently let non-conforming walls stay, I'm prepared to support this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. Commissioner Beruzzi.
I am as well, and I could go ahead and make a motion. So I would make a motion to approve this use permit as described in the staff report.
And I'm happy to second that.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Beruzzi and a second from Commissioner Schindler. Seeing no other discussion, I will go ahead and call the vote on item F2. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Aye.
I am also a yes, so that is four yes votes, zero no votes, and three absent. The motion passes. Thank you very much. We will now move to item F3. This agenda item addresses a use permit at 3,000 Sandhill Road. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to, one, modify the previously approved State of California Alcoholic Beverage Control or ABC License Type 41 on on-sale beer and wine for an eating place, to Type 47 On Sale General Eating Place, which would allow the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption at an existing restaurant. And, two, modify the hours of operation to 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week, at 3,000 Sandhill Road in the C1CX or Administrative Professional and Research District Restrictive Conditional Development Permit zoning district. Determine these actions are categorically exempt under CEQA Guideline Section 15301, Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. Mr. Chan, I believe you are also the planner for this item. Does staff have any updates on the staff report?
Thank you, Chair Eric. There are no updates to the staff report. Staff would like to note that Steve Rawlings from Rawlings Consulting is project representative. He's available for questions virtually.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Do any commissioners have any clarifying questions before we move to public comment? Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you. I believe this is a clarifying question. Excuse me, to the applicant. The staff report says that being open on weekends will allow opportunities for holiday, weekend-related dining. I was unclear as to what that might entail. Could you just enumerate the vision for the weekend, and what were weekend hours, and what we're talking about here?
Hi. Hi. Good evening. I'm Steve Rawlings. Are you guys able to hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
We are good. Thank you.
Terrific. Well, thank you very much. I'm Steve Rawlings. I'm here as a consultant for Bon Appetit, which is the operator of the restaurant, the Sandhill Sun Deck. The, I don't know if you've all had an opportunity to go over there, but they did a beautiful remodel on the property just a while back. And as a part of that, they're trying to uplift their menu and just uplift the experience in general there. And part of that would be the opportunity to be able to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits. In addition to that, also possibly generate a little bit more weekend-type of business. You know, for the most part, it's been treated as a little bit more like a corporate cafe, and a lot of the business folks in the area have dined there. But interestingly enough, we sent out our, a community meeting notice, and we did, we did receive some responses. And all of them were exceptionally positive, that they said, gee, we, we're excited to see this go forward. We need another great place to dine at. And that included on weekends. So we have asked for the flexibility to be able to stay open later, all days of the week, but primarily, you know, on Friday and Saturday evenings. But we're not staying open very, very late, but we just wanted the flexibility to be able to do so. I don't know if that directly answered your question, but I hope it shared a little bit of the vision of what we're trying to do.
Thank you. That's, that's helpful for vision. I am now chuckling and suspecting that perhaps there is a comment missing, or, sorry, excuse me, a comma missing, because I read the statement as allowing opportunities for holiday, weekend-related dining, thinking we were just talking about something that was happening on weekends that were also holidays, for example, the recent Fourth of July. But my guess is, what this is saying is weekend and holiday dining, so seven days a week. So that is, that's okay. I think I appreciate the clarity of the vision, and that's all that I was seeking.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. That would be an interesting restaurant concept, holiday, weekend dining. Okay. Seeing no other clarifying questions from the commission, I am going to move us to public comment. Mr. Turner, could you please provide instructions regarding public comment and start the comment period for item F3?
Yes. If you would like to give public comment on item F3, please click the raise hand button if you are on Zoom, or star nine if you are calling in. If you are in person and would like to give public comment, please fill out a comment card and hand it to me. I'll give it a few moments here. At this time, we do not have any public commenters.
Okay. I am going to move us to close the public comment period and move us back into commission discussion, and ultimately, a motion regarding this use permit. Do any commissioners wish to begin the discussion? Commissioner Beruzzi.
I'm all for any dining opportunities that are within walking distance of neighborhoods and don't require people to get in their cars and drive. And there are not enough up in that area. I also used to go to that place for breakfast burritos sometimes when I worked up on Sandhill, and I appreciated it.
Thank you, Commissioner Beruzzi.
As a resident of D5, I am also extremely excited always for an opportunity to eat someplace new. I support both the expansion of the alcohol, excuse me, service levels, as well as moving to a seven-day-a-week. And I am prepared to make a motion to grant the use permit as proposed in the staff recommendation.
as proposed in the staff recommendation.
Please go ahead.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no other commissioners wishing to make comments, I will call the vote on item F3. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Aye.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Yes.
I am also a yes, so that item passes. Four yes votes, zero no votes, and three absent. Okay, we will close item F3 and move to item F4. This agenda item addresses a use permit at 125 to 135 Constitution Drive. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit for the sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption State of California Alcoholic Beverage Control License Type 41, which is considered a special use at an existing corporate, at existing corporate campus cafeterias at 125 to 135 Constitution Drive in the M3X or Commercial Business Park Conditional Development Permit Zoning District. Determine these actions are categorically exempt under CEQA Guideline Section 15301 Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. Mr. Chan, thank you again for being the planner for this item. Does staff have any updates on item F4?
Thank you, Chair. There are no updates to the staff report. Steve Rawlings from Rawlings Consulting, same person as item F3, is available for questions for item F4.
Okay, I'm going to move us, before we go to public comment, to clarifying questions from commissioners. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yeah, this is either for staff or the applicant, I think either could answer. Is it my understanding that this particular cafe is only open to people who are working in this building and their guests? Or like, can people from the neighborhood also go there?
So the Conditional Development Permit established for Menlo Gateway, which is this development, it allows for dining opportunities for, as you mentioned, the people that work there, their guests, but also can allow, if any member is interested of the public to go visit, they're, they're able to as well. There's no prohibition.
Okay, thanks. So this would function similarly to the last place that we just discussed?
I wouldn't say it's very similar because it's not a full-service restaurant per se. This is a corporate campus cafeteria. Of course, the employees that work there can eat there and anyone that visits. But I think you would generally have like an interest to go to that business to, to eat there. It's not necessarily like a restaurant. So a bit different than the 3,000 Sand Hill application of us.
I see, thank you.
Seeing no other clarifying questions, I will move us to public comment. Mr. Turner, could you please provide instructions on how to provide public comment and open the comment period for item F4?
Yes, if you would like to give public comment on item F4, please click the raise hand button on the bottom of your screen if you are participating via Zoom or star nine if you are calling in to tonight's meeting. If you're in person, please fill out a comment card and hand it to me. I will give it a few moments here. And at this time, we do not have any public commenters.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. I will go ahead and close the public comment period for item F4 and move us back to the dais for commission discussion. Commissioner Beruzzi.
I don't think this is going to affect my vote, but I am going to express a little bit of disappointment in how the way we envisionally envisioned this area developing back when the general plan was approved in 2016 and some of the ways it's actually developed, there's a little bit of a disconnect. I think the phrase that was uttered at the time was live, work, play. And there was a vision, at least as I understand it, and I wasn't directly involved in the process. But there was a vision that there would be people living there and then being able to dine and shop in the area. And so I'm a little sad that what we have are a lot of onsite corporate cafeterias in a place where we're also building a lot of housing. And I just don't think that that's in accordance with the way the vision was described when people were supportive of it. And I, one of the reasons I liked the previous item was because it blurs the line a little bit between these sort of monolithic corporate office park-feeling places and the adjacent neighborhoods and gives people, again, a way to get somewhere on foot instead of needing to feel like they need to get in their cars, which especially when you consider drunk driving is, you know, something I think about. So I don't have a reason to not to vote against this. I'm just expressing a desire, I guess, to see more public-serving facilities in this neighborhood in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Beruzzi. I think that was very well said. I don't know if staff is prepared to answer this question, but I would be curious to hear any staff reflections on why or why not that area has developed as it has and not more in line with the vision that was discussed when the general plan was approved.
I guess that'll fall to me as the longest-tenured employee here. It's not mean, does not mean I'm the most well-informed. I mean, I, I think the, it comes back to the fact that the commission knows, but is worth expressing is that zoning can prohibit uses. It can't create them. And so I think we've done a good job in this area and other areas about setting up the right allowances. But in terms of business interest, it does have to be there for, for a business to open and operate. There are some nuances with bonus-level projects and certain public amenities that could be more of a requirement. But that's where my knowledge tapers off a little bit. And I don't think that was part of the Menlo Gateway discussion per se of mandating a certain amount of public, publicly accessible businesses. That said, it certainly is the objective that folks who live and work will ultimately have opportunities for restaurants and other services. And so we'll certainly pass that along to the team that's been working on this area and see if there's any opportunities for reflection or improvement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rogers. The chair appreciates your willingness to indulge us. I'm going to, again, piggyback and ask the applicant the same or a similar question and take advantage of the fact that, Mr. Rawlings, you were the consultant on two different projects here. You may not be prepared to answer this either, but I would be curious if there are things that the city could do, whether it be zoning code changes or anything else that would make it more attractive to developers or more possible to develop more live, work, play options in the area around Constitution Drive.
I can certainly give you a little bit of a generic answer because I do consult with a lot of restaurant groups. And, you know, one of the things that they do look for is obviously, if you're, if you're dedicated to like a breakfast-lunch type of menu, then, you know, a business setting is often ideal if you're looking to do a dinner menu and attract those. It's very, very important to have a pretty big population to draw from. You know, the, the breakfast and lunch crowd can be businesses and can support a restaurant fairly well. When you want to become like a sit-down dining restaurant there, the number of people around there makes a big, big difference. And in that particular, with my familiarity with it, it's probably still needing a little bit more of a population in that area for somebody to, you know, open up something that's a little bit more of a sit-down. And that's, again, just kind of talking generically. You know, corpus, corporate cafes do most of their business, you know, breakfast and lunchtime. And that's why you see a lot of those, and they primarily cater to the business community. So a little bit more population density probably helps out quite a bit.
Thank you, Mr. Rawlings. That's much appreciated. Commissioner Sillen.
Thank you. I just had a quick question for staff. Going back to Commissioner Beruzzi's clarifying question about public access. So what I, what I heard was that the development agreement or conditional use permit doesn't prohibit public access, but is it the case that, I believe for the other item on Sand Hill, it's required that the public has access for this particular dining establishment? Is it the fact that the public is required to have access or just that the applicant could allow access if they wished?
Thank you, Commissioner Sillen. I believe in approximately 2011 for the former application at 3,000 Sand Hill, that restaurant was previously part of that office complex, of course, but the restaurant was not open to members of the public. So with the 2011 amendment, they added the ability for the restaurant to also serve beer and wine and then to also extra stipulate that it would be required to be open functioning as like a typical restaurant available to members of the public. This application that we have on Constitution, it's a bit different because it's not a restaurant per se. It's a corporate campus cafeteria that's already built into the office buildings. So there is a difference there. But in either case, members of the public are welcome to dine there if they wish.
Okay, and just to clarify for this, the current application that we're discussing on Constitution, is it the case that they're required to provide access to the public or is it just that they've chosen to do so?
I believe they have chosen to do so. It's not a requirement that the restaurants stay open. It's not enumerated condition in their CDP, unlike the last application.
Okay, thanks. Just out of pure curiosity through the chair, I was wondering if the applicant would maybe have a sense of, do, do members of the public ever go to a cafeteria like this? Is that a thing?
If they're in the area, they, they will certainly drop by. And obviously, hey, if we can sell somebody a sandwich or, you know, a cup of coffee or something along those lines, they're more than welcome to. But I think that most people find other places a little bit more convenient to go to. But again, if they're, if they're in the area, it's not designed to set up to, you know, advertise to people saying, hey, you know, we're having a $3.99 breakfast special or, or something like that. That's which you might find in a traditional type of restaurant. But, you know, certainly, we do get some of that business, but typically it's people that are, you know, in the immediate vicinity, whether they work at this office or a different office. Or if they're, they're on business, you get a lot of that where they maybe had a meeting and then they come in and dine after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, my comment is in line with the other commissioners. I think that it would be nice to encourage more of a hybrid setup even for office parks where the public could potentially have access. I think that would be more, you know, sometimes, especially in that area, I feel like I'm driving past like kind of fortresses. And as someone that lives in the city, I think it would feel more welcoming if there was at least the potential to have access. But yeah, in this particular case, I'm happy to support the application. I don't see an issue with it. That's just more of a wish.
Thank you, Commissioner Sillen. I will just say, for me, I strongly support the comments of my fellow commissioners, both in wishing that this area had or would continue to be developed in a different way and more in line with the general plan and also in my specific support of this item.
I'm ready to make a motion if nobody else is.
Commissioner Beruzzi.
So I move that we approve this use permit as described by the staff in this report.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. I will call the vote on item F4. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Yes.
I am also a yes, that is four yes votes, zero no votes with three absent. So that item passes. That concludes the public hearing items for today's meeting. So we will move to Section G of the agenda, informational items. Mr. Rogers, would anyone from staff wish to provide an update on upcoming planning commission meetings or agendas?
Sure, thank you. The, as previously noted, the July 28th meeting is going to be dedicated to the Parkline project. In this instance, the planning commission is acting as a recommending body to the city council. So assuming the commission is able to make a recommendation, it will move forward to future meetings at the city council level. For the planning commission, following the July 28th meeting, the next meeting will be August 11th. As you know, from earlier in this meeting, we have continued one item to that. Others will most certainly be, almost certainly be scheduled in the upcoming weeks. So that concludes our schedule update.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Do any commissioners have questions? Yes, Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yeah, let me follow up with a question about the Parkline item. Can you detail the nature of what the planning commission will be asked to recommend? Is it going to be to accept the final EIR? Is it, is it recommending other parts of the project? Because when I've been looking through it, there are a lot of things that the public commented on that were outside the scope of the final EIR. And so I'm not sure whether those are going to be part of the agenda or the discussion or not.
Yeah, no, great question. It is a consolidated recommendation on all the actions. So the project page gives you some more details, but it's certifying the environmental impact report, a general plan amendment, zoning ordinance amendment, rezoning, vesting tentative map and subdivision, conditional development permit, BMR housing agreement, a development agreement for certain public benefits, and architectural control. And there's also heritage tree removals associated with it that the city council can also act on. So it's the whole, the whole package, which is why the entirety of the meeting is being dedicated to it.
Thanks, it helps.
Thank you, Commissioner Beruzzi. Do other commissioners have questions? I just had one. In preparing for this item, it would be useful if staff would be able to provide general descriptions of conditions for which the planning commission could decline to certify an EIR. The EIR is exceptionally detailed. And so I'm just curious, in practice, what that would need to look like.
We can pass that on to the project planner.
Okay. Thank you very much. Seeing no other questions from commissioners, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:10 PM. Thank you, everyone.